All right. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our Planning Board meeting, August the 8th, Tuesday at 4:33. Just before I call the meeting to order, if I could just remind everyone, when you ask a question, don't forget to turn on your mic, just so that when the meeting's being recorded and people are listening, they can hear you clearly. So that's just a reminder, just, yeah, be really mindful of that. And so we'll move on. So I'll call the meeting to order. Do we have any declarations of conflicts today? Okay, seeing none. Can I have an approval of the agenda? Moved by Paul Conley, seconded by Sin. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. That was everybody in favor of that. Can I get an adoption of the minutes from the Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, July the 4th, as well as the minutes from the public meeting from July the 11th? Moved by Jackie, seconded by Bobby Kenny. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Any business arising from any of those two sets of minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. We have a busy agenda tonight with five reports. So we will start right off with report number one, which is an application for 139 Beech Grove Road, and this is a request, a variance request, and Brandon is going to give us the report. So over to you, Brandon.
Thank you. So, yeah, we have a variance request on the side yard. The owners of 139 Beech Grove Road are seeking a variance to allow their accessory building, which currently acts as a garage, to be converted into a garden suite. The variance request is to reduce the required side yard setback of 1.83 meters for a garden suite to approximately 1.53 meters. This property is located within a single detached residential zone where all adjoining properties are single detached dwellings, with one also having an accessory building. So the Planning and Heritage Department issued a permit for the current accessory building on August 1998, where the owner intended to use it as a garage. It meets all requirements for a garden suite outlined in the bylaw except for the side yard setback, which will require a reduction of roughly 16%. During the variance process for this proposal, no letters of support or opposition were received from nearby property owners. So converting this garage into a residential dwelling through a garden suite meets several goals laid out in the official plan. These include promoting residential development in fully serviced areas of the city, promoting residential development near centers of employment, enhancing the range of available housing within the city, and allowing accessory buildings to be utilized as dwellings. With all this considered, the Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council to approve the major variance requests to reduce the required side yard setback from 1.83 meters to 1.53 meters in order to convert the existing garage into a garden suite. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Does anybody have any questions about this application? No? So the recommendation from the Planning and Heritage staff is to recommend to council to approve the major variance. So as a board, do I have somebody that would move that?
I'll move that, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, moved by Counselor McCabe and seconded by Sin. All those in favor of moving this forward to council? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. Next is a rezoning application, and Emily will be presenting this report. It is 247-251 Mount Edward Road, and it's a request to proceed to public consultation. So over to you, Emily.
I'm just gonna give a moment for the slide deck to come up. Thank you, folks. So my name is Emily Traynor. There's some new faces here this evening, so it's a pleasure to meet you folks. I'm here on behalf of the city from Dillon Consulting, and I'm going to give you an overview of the recommendation report for 247 to 251 Mount Edward Road. This is a proposed development concept plan, and the request before you folks this evening is to recommend proceeding to public consultation regarding this development concept plan. Encompassed with this is a comprehensive development area amendment application, an official plan amendment application, and a zoning bylaw amendment application. And generally, this is to permit a new residential development, including 253 residential dwelling units. What's being proposed is two phases of development, with the first including 16 stacked townhouses and three apartment dwellings, and the second phase including three apartment dwellings and two stacked townhouses. So just to orientate you folks to this property, it's located on the west side of Mount Edward Road. It's just northwest of the Towers Road, Mount Edward Road, and Montgomery Drive intersection there. And you folks might be more familiar with, just east of this is the Canadian Tire retail store as well, on the opposite side of the Confederation Trail. So that blue there on the screen highlights the location of the property. The current land use designation that applies to this property, it's kind of a split designation. So the portion of the property abutting Mount Edward Road, it has a low-density residential designation that applies to it, whereas the remainder, like the bulk of the property, is zoned comprehensive development area. Excuse me, it's comprehensive development area by the land use map, so the designation, not the zoning, excuse me. So similarly with the zoning, it's along the portion of the lot abutting Mount Edward Road is low-density residential zoning and comprehensive development area for the remainder of it. So you can see it in blue again in these images here. So the zoning bylaw requires public consultation prior to council's approval of a development concept plan for any land zoned comprehensive development area. So this image here shows you the development concept plan that was prepared by Sable Arc and submitted on behalf of the applicant. So just again, to note that it's a two-phase development that they're proposing. So you can see, the middle image there shows the Phase 1, the location of Phase 1 with the townhouses and three low-rise apartment buildings. And then Phase 2, the bottom image there shows the additional three apartment buildings, and then two stacked townhouses that are proposed along the portion of the property abutting Mount Edward Road. So just to note as well, there is a public road proposed as well. It runs north-south through the site, and the location of it is consistent with what is outlined in the West Royalty Transportation Master Plan, the recommended location in that plan. There's also a temporary access proposed off of Mount Edward Road to serve that Phase 1 portion of the development that would be removed in Phase 2 and replaced with a private driveway off of the Spencer Road extension. So just our preliminary analysis prior to this proceeding to public consultation, we note that the proposal is supported by two key policies of the official plan that are focused on housing needs in variety. So the location of this residential density within walking distance of transportation, mainly the T3 Transit Line, recreation with the Confederation Trail, a major educational facility being UPEI, and commercial amenities and services really to the immediate east there with the Royalty Crossing Mall, Canadian Tire Superstore, that major hub, that is supported by Section 3.3 of the official plan. And the proposed residential density, you know, it will meet future housing needs and the immediate housing needs. We're all well aware there's a housing crisis in Charlestown, so this would certainly help to address that. Just to note as well, the draft official plan, which is underway at the moment and has yet to be adopted, in the latest draft dated March 2023, the draft designation that applies to this property is node, and the draft objective for nodes is to support the highest densities in the city on lands with this designation. And a draft policy for the nodes is to prohibit low-density residential development and encourage building heights up to eight stories. So the proposal is consistent with these draft, the draft objective and policy of the official plan for this particular property. It's also, just to note, that Sable Arc, on behalf of the applicant, did submit a design phasing concept, and most recently, a design brief for this proposal. And hopefully you folks received her copy of that this evening, and the copy of it today digitally, which just outlines really the overall design, building and site design concept, the compatibility with the surrounding area, the ownership that's proposed. So these are the items that, under the zoning bylaw, councils are required to consider prior to approval of a development concept plan. We talked about already the configuration of the public street, and then also, the development concept plan was circulated to relevant city departments, and their comments are captured in the analysis section of the report. If you want to have a look, we can certainly discuss those if you wish as well. So with these considerations in mind, the recommendation is for City Council and Planning Board to encourage City Council to approve the request to proceed to public consultation regarding this development concept plan, which is in support of the CDA amendment, OP amendment, and zoning bylaw amendment for this property. So that concludes my comments, and I welcome any questions or concerns from folks. And I would also note that the applicant and the property owner are here if you folks have any more detailed design questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Can you leave that slide up for me just for a minute?
Sure.
Just for clarification, the applicant has submitted for three applicants, three, there's three applications we're looking at, right, within the same, within this same application? One is for CDA amendment, one is for the official plan, and one is for zoning and development?
Right, and this all feeds into this development concept plan that's required for any land-zoned CDA in the city. Yep.
Okay, so it's the development concept plan that requires the public consultation, not one, two, or three?
Technically, under the requirements of the zoning bylaw, public consultation is also required for those three things. It's just for this specific zone, there's that development concept plan initial approval process that kind of feeds into later approvals as well. It's noted in the report, if the applicant wants to come in with a building permit application for the phases, the separate phases of the proposal, they would have to go through Planning Board at that stage to receive confirmation and a recommendation from Planning Board that it aligns with the approved development concept plan. That's another stage of the process.
Okay, thank you. I'll just now open it up to you folks. Counselor McCabe.
And I'm trying to understand all this, because it's a little more confusing, even though I sit through these. So prior to going to the public meeting, so with this application, there was quite a few things pointed out in the interdepartmental reviews, you know, whether or not they're just in the planning process for water and sewer. The second access point was brought up already, because Spencer Drive has not been signed over as far as, I don't think, from St. Martha's yet. So there's still a bunch of questions that are not clear. So should those be addressed prior to going to public consultation, or are we just going with the idea that eventually this is gonna happen? Like, there's quite a few, like, points. So I'm just wondering why we're going to public consultation unless all these questions and concerns are gonna be addressed before we go.
So just firstly, in regard to the, I think the first comment you mentioned was from the utility, Sewer and Utility Department, right? So I think the comment from the manager was that there is work underway to get sort of a cost-sharing agreement with the various property owners that are looking to develop along this portion of Mount Edward Road. However, if the applicant property owner does not, wants to proceed without taking part in that, they can, it's just gonna be at their own cost, any sort of servicing for this property. So that is the option available, if they don't want to await this agreement with the various property owners. And then secondly, the access of Spencer, Spencer Drive, the extension, that did receive, you know, there was supportive commentary from the manager of Public Works in regard to this. So at this stage in the process of the development concept plan, this is supported by the manager of Public Works.
I understood from our last public meeting, though, with another application that's coming ahead here tonight, is that road hasn't been shared or signed off yet, and maybe I can ask more about that. But I know it was indicated that, where is this, for my questions, will the road be in place with the two access points? Because the second, what they were proposing is gonna be the second access point, hasn't been, you're nodding, so you know what I'm talking about, I think. It hasn't been signed off yet from St. Martha's people. So, you know, I just, I'm saying these are things that are unknown yet, but here we are gonna go to public consultation with answers that we don't have, or questions that we don't have answers to, and I just feel that that's maybe putting the, I'm always, I'm all for a public consultation. So I'm just telling you, these are gonna be questions that if you don't have answers, it's gonna be really challenging for me to be able to support an application without those questions.
For sure. And thank you, through the chair, thank you, Counselor McCabe. And just to clarify, the road, I believe you're referring to is a north-south public road that's being proposed versus the Spencer Drive extension? So that is a part of the West Royalty Transportation Master Plan, it aligns with that. And any Phase 2 of this development cannot proceed if that public road is not, you know, designed, constructed, approved.
So this first phase has absolutely nothing to do with that, and there will be two access points for fire, based on this?
Yes, so off Mount Edward Road, there'd be a temporary access, and my understanding is that Spencer Drive, there would be an access as well, the applicant and the architect is here to clarify that, if you wish.
I think, just so you maybe can help me understand it, because I know that was the bone the other evening, was that that second access, yes, temporary, but when that temporary is removed, then what?
That's correct. You're talking about Bilco's development to the north, Rob LeBlanc had presented. The question came up with that north-south road connector. Their phase, their second phase of their project, their large six-story apartment buildings cannot go forward without that in place. Our development, our plans for this align with that. If I can go back. How do you?
Oh, yeah, do you hit that there?
So I understand, and that did come up in this diagram. You can kind of see where we're cutting through Bilco's property to the north and where it would connect to St. Martha's. But for, to answer your question specifically, Phase 1, the townhouse development, the 212 store, the 212 unit and 18-unit apartment building, they would have two means of access, one off of Mount Edward Road, which would be temporary. That would be temporary and only until that north-south road connector was put in place. But it also has a connection directly to Spencer Drive extension. So I understand Spencer Drive extension, the city's moving forward with it, it's under engineering at the moment, and potentially for construction, I assume, within the next year. So that is the, that's the plan in place. But our development, we've worked directly with Rob LeBlanc, Ryan Peanu, in lining up our north-south road connector, the green space as well. The connection to St. Martha's Court, I'm not entirely sure what happens there. We know that that is the intent, for to cut the property east-west, but the development that happens west of that north-south connector cannot happen without that connector road.
And that's my point. So with the temporary, and just help me, concrete me down, it's late in the day. With the temporary access to Mount Edward Road, if I'm playing devil's advocate, St. Martha says, you're never getting this property, will there still be able to have a second access point to that first part of your development?
Off of Spencer Drive extension, yes. You can see it here.
Okay, help me.
At the east end, I don't know if there are point. Right here.
And that Spencer Road extension has nothing to do with St. Martha's Court?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. But it's a valid question, the St. Martha's Road connection.
Yep, thank you. I believe Paul Conley has a question.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. My question was pretty much the same as Julie's. This is a significant development, and there's going to be, you know, traffic flow is gonna be a big, big issue, and that north-south public road, you know, that's, at this point, that's a big question mark, I assume. I mean, has there been, like, land consolidation provisions made for that?
That's a great question, Paul. I don't think the north-south connector road has been approved yet, completed through Public Works. Has it, Counselor McCabe?
Not, not mine, I don't.
Okay. Emily, if you had any more to add to that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. I can just say that in the, prepared by this consultant, CBCL, that was a recommendation for the location of the road. I know that the proposal for its, you know, well through the development review process for the property to the north, this proposed road is in alignment with that. I understand that Spencer, Spencer Drive extension, it's in alignment with that as shown in the West Royalty Transportation Master Plan. So I understand, you know, St. Dunstons, the St. Martha's Court lands to the north, there may be discussions underway with that, but as it stands right now, this does align with both the Transportation Master Plan and the road configuration for the property to the north, which is subject to a substantial development as well.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Sin has a question?
Yeah, what is the timeline for completion of this project?
That's a good question. I mean, assuming all was in place and approved, I mean, this is, this is a five-year development, really, in terms of construction. But it all, it depends on the Spencer Road extension when that happens, and of course, the north-south road connector. But as Emily pointed out, this all aligns with the transportation study. We work directly with the developer adjacent to make that work, but again, it hinges on those roads being in place.
Well, I agree with that, but I'm just wondering, because timeline is kind of important, because, you know, you have this north-south road and the Spencer Drive extension. Now, sometimes if there is a mismatch, then the concern for traffic is also there, which, you know, Counselor McCabe mentioned earlier. However, I personally, you know, am supportive of, you know, high-density development, which is extremely important because we have low vacancy rate. And I assume these are all rental units, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And do you guys have any plan to include certain percentage of these units as less, you know, to offer it at less than market value, or, you know, you know, low-rent units?
There's been no discussion of affordable housing at this point. I don't know if the applicants are here, they can speak to that, but we haven't spoken about.
Well, actually, they can, but the application before us, it's, although it's a great question, it really doesn't pertain to the decisions that we're making on this. So it's, you know, as a curious mind, of course, we're looking at affordable housing, but it's not, it's not part of our job today with this application. So that's just my point of order on that.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I, you know, that was just, you know, because they mentioned about the future plan, would require, allow up to eight stories, and they have six stories. So I was just wondering, you know, because it was brought before, I was just wondering if certain units are less than the market price. But, but no, thank you for your answers.
And I would also just mention that And I would also just mention that probably putting the cart before the horse a little bit, too, in terms of referring to the first draft of an official plan that has many drafts to go. So I think it's really difficult for us to look at that as a, as a mechanism for approval, because we haven't, that has not been approved yet. So that's still in the, in the works and many, many drafts to go. Any other questions? Oh, yes, go ahead, Rosemary, and then Jackie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a general concern about, I, I think it's great, all the housing development, but I do have a concern about all the traffic. And my question is, how many units have we approved for that general area? For example, looking back at my notes, and I know last August, I believe, we reviewed an application for, I think it's the same, same area that we're approving later on in the agenda tonight. Plus, we've had another one from APM. So I'm just wondering, like, in total, how many units have we approved for that area in behind the mall? And looking at that in light of infrastructure and particularly traffic? And then I'm wondering, when is that north-south connector road going to be built? Because I think we really need it.
Yeah, thank you, Rosemary, for your question. And you're absolutely right, we're, we're definitely going to need some more infrastructure out there to, to maintain the level of development that the city of Charlestown is going to require over the next fifteen years. And we all, we, we did note that in our growth management study, where the population of Charlestown is growing and they're anticipating eighteen to twenty additional thousand people, eighteen to twenty thousand additional people in Charlestown by 2040. So you're right, that, the traffic needs to be addressed, but I think there's probably other components of that, too, whether it's the transit system or, you know, moving towards more active transportation. But I don't know when Spencer Drive and the north-south connector are going to be approved. Emily, can you answer that?
I can't. I think that's a question for the manager of Public Works, who's working with the consultant, I understand, for the design concept, or the, the detailed design, I should say, for the Spencer Road extent, extension right now. I know that I, I will be extending an invite to the manager of Public Works to come to the public meeting and provide a detailed, you know, analysis prior to this proceeding to Planning Board for recommendation to council for approval or refusal. So those are items, like, we can address that through the public consultation and at the, the next recommendation report as well, to ensure those timelines are established and, or what the, the current timeline is, that we have an understanding of that.
Thank you. Councilor McCabe, before we move on to Jackie's question, do you want to just follow up on that?
And I think that, that we're missing that key point, right? We didn't, we're not sure, we're hearing different messaging from the property owners in the area, who are, some are working together really well and looking forward to this connection. You have another group who are saying, hmm, not sure we're going to get on board with this. And without this piece, what we're talking about's not going to happen. So it, I think there's some discussion that has to happen before you start to go out to public, to say, here we go, can we do this? When we don't even know the answers to the questions about this north-south connector road. I think that's a huge, that's a huge missing piece right now, as far, for me, too, as far as traffic, as far as safety access, as far as all of these things. Like, I think that discussion really has to happen, whether it's with manager of Public Works or manager of Public Works and planning, if you bring your partner people together to say, where's this going? Before we start approving more going. That's, and maybe I'm wrong, but that's just how I'm understanding this right now.
I just see our CAO Mohammed has her hand up there to make a comment. Over to you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, I don't have a microphone, but the way it usually works is once you have a Transportation Master Plan, take the pics of the road is there, it's negotiation with the developers, and their plans come forward. And as you approve these plans, then incrementally we get the road to be able to be built. So it's, it's a give-and-take kind of process, and it's how everyone gets approved and then comes online, and then the road can get constructed.
But what happens if someone owns that land and says, we're not? Can we, can we just take over that land, then? I'm, I'm sorry, but...
Technically, under the NGA, there are means of expropriation, doing things like that. But that's not, that's not usually how you operate when it comes to land use. You negotiate with the land, with the developers to get where you need to go.
Okay, because...
Hang on, Paul. Jackie had a question?
First.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, if we're building on the same conversation, then sure. Jackie says, you go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, Madam Chair, you know, to what extent we should be pursuing this, this, but it seems to me that traffic flow is going to be a very critical piece here. I mean, I, yesterday I was out at Mount Edward Grocery, which is very close to the property that we're talking about. It took me eight to ten minutes to get from the grocery parking lot onto Mount Edward Road. I mean, have you seen the flow of traffic on Mount Edward Road recently? It's just like a zoo. It really is. So I, I, I concur with Councilor McCabe, you know, until there is some sense that the land can be consolidated for, especially the north-south thing, I just feel like we're putting the cart before the horse. In terms of going to the, to a public meeting, not being able to, in some fashion, address that issue, I, I think it could create some chaos at the public meeting.
Thank you for that. So if I hear you correctly, Paul and Councilor McCabe, a question, then, that I would have for Emily would be, is this, is this common practice that we would proceed to a public consultation before we have approval and confirmation that the north-south connector is actually going to come to be?
Through the chair, yes, because the example being the other application that's on the agenda for consideration this evening, that proceeded to public consultation, that incorporates the north-south connector road that you folks are looking at. It's aligned with that configuration. That application did proceed to public consultation, and it's before you folks this evening for a recommendation for approval or refusal to go to council. So that's a more recent example that this does occur. So yes.
Great, thank you for that clarification. And that was similar to what CAO Mohammed had also clarified for us. So I thank you, too, both, for that clarification. And I think Jackie has a question.
Thank you. Yeah, echoing what others have said here tonight, I agree with the concerns about traffic. But like has been mentioned, if there's going to be an increase in population of twenty thousand people, I, I do feel like we need to start thinking about where these people will go, rather than waiting for the road and then saying, okay, now we can start thinking about development. Just my feeling, though. I did have one other question, which was, so you mentioned how you were collaborating with the neighbors on the, who are working on the other development concept plan about the road? And you mentioned how you were maybe working to, working with them about how you could make the green space more integrated or something like that? Were there other design features of this proposal and the other one that you collaborated with them on?
Yeah, the primary, obviously, aligning the north-south road connector was super important. Of course, the details that go into that, whether it be sidewalks, et cetera, should be carried through all the way to St. Martha's Court. In addition to that, the green space budding the Confederation Trail, Bilco's development has the park on that side as well. The stormwater retention pond that's presently shown in the northwest corner, there's talks of connecting that with their stormwater pond to consolidate that wet area, so it opens up more green space for use. In terms of the architectural design, I can speak to that, like, the, the buildings graduate from a two-and-a-half story to a six-story. The proposal by Rob LeBlanc and Fathom is for four-six-story buildings. So our building E is six stories as well, so it graduates from Spencer Drive up to six, just to kind of help with the viewscape, if you will. So there's been some back and forth on a variety of different items. There's a lot of similarities between the development and this temporary access road and having the townhouses, the stacked townhouses budding Mount Edward Road, so it's in kind with the residential properties across. But otherwise, there are some differences in our, our makeup and having our three-apartment buildings kind of broken down in form and size. So there's been, there's been that. St. Martha's Court is a question mark. This is all under CDA, Development Agreement. When that's drafted, we will be required to put that northwest road, north-south road connector in, including the green space that would be deeded over to parks. It would be the same for the development to the north. St. Martha's Court is also a CDA zone. I don't know if they're required to make that connection, and that's something that either yourself or Laurel will have to speak to, but...
Through the chair. I can confirm, so that portion of St. Martha's Court lands, where that connector is supposed to be incorporated, that portion is zoned CDA today. And in order for that portion of St. Martha's Court to be developed, it's vacant today. There's no concept in, as of today, for that, that I'm aware of, for that parcel. But if it were subject to development, it would be contingent on that connector being in place. So it, it will remain undeveloped until that time.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Does anybody, oh, go ahead, Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering, what is the city's plan to increase transit around the area?
So you're asking, what is the city's plan for increasing transit?
Yeah.
So another great question, but it doesn't pertain to this application. So I, I think it's...
Madam Chair, it does, actually, because... Sorry. Because we are talking about the roads and, you know, because of the traffic, you know, this development, there is concern regarding this development. But it's really not the road, it's the transit. If we, if we were to manage the traffic, we have to introduce transit system that will actually help whether or not we have the north-south corridor, sorry, the connector. So I was just wondering if the city has plans to introduce, you know, more transit routes in the high-density area? Because that can also take away a lot of traffic issues.
Okay, thank you for that question. And I'm going to, I'm going to ask CAO Mohammed to clarify this, but from what I understand, today we're dealing with land use, and it doesn't, unfortunately, it doesn't factor in to the question that you're asking. But if I could, if I could put you on the spot, CAO, to just confirm that I'm...
So we're just in the process of that population growth for the city as a whole. Unfortunately, as new developments come on, we don't look at the new development and then change stand, transit routes right away. The city is looked at collectively, and then routes are prioritized based on that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I would also point out, your question was, was spot-on, and it's what we're all thinking, because we, we continue to work in these silos, but we're all working to get ourselves out of these silos, so that questions like yours could be more easily answered in a, in, when we're discussing these types of developments. So, I mean, still a great question. So thank you for that.
And that's one of the reasons why things like this should go for public consultation.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think our...
Sorry, I was just going to make one other comment. So the Spencer Road extension, in regards to traffic, it's presently planned, as I understand, a two-lane road. You can see a long, kind of, green strip there. It's a twenty-foot-wide strip, approximately a third of an acre, that is presently owned by developers. They're giving that up to the city to allow for that road to expand to four lanes to assist with traffic, inclusion of potentially bike paths and sidewalks. So that has been kind of some foresight on behalf of Public Works, a request put forward by them, and the developers, the owners, have allowed for that land to go to them for future expansion.
Great, thank you for that clarification. I know that the developer's here, and she has a few comments that she would like to make. Before I turn the mic over to her, does anyone else have any questions for myself or Emily? Oh, go ahead, Rosemary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think Counselor McCabe has raised a good issue that, I think it's great to go to public consultation, but we also want to look organized as a committee and as a council. And I'm wondering if Public Works could come prepared to speak to timelines? For example, when is this north, and I understand, you know, the contingencies around building this north-south extension, but if they could sort of lay out the conditions, this and this and this have to happen, and then, this is when the road would be built? Because I think people want to know specifics and not just generalities, that, yes, it's in a plan, but, you know, plan, lots of plans never happen. So I think we need something definite around transportation and further infrastructure development to take to that public meeting.
Thank you, Rosemary. So Emily, is this something that this committee can ask of Public Works? And do we say, we will proceed to consultation if we can have the appropriate people prepared to speak at the meet? Like, where do we go with that, is when Rosemary points that out?
Sure. So my suggestion would be that, you know, obviously, if the, the recommendation today is to proceed to public consultation, council approves, the next step would be to schedule the meeting. And I, my recommendation would be that that be coordinated with the manager of Public Works to ensure that he will be available to attend that meeting. I know in the case of the property just adjacent, that you folks will also be considering this evening, that, I believe, CBCL, the consultant that was retained to prepare that transportation study for this West Royalty area, that they were in attendance at that meeting, so that might be an, also another option, because they performed a detailed analysis of, you know, future trip generation for that area under certain land use conditions for this property, being that it be apartment-townhouse development. They can really speak to those items. And the manager of Public Works could speak to timelines as well. And like you say, Rosemary, conditions that need to be in place for certain pieces to come, come into effect. So that would be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you for that. If there's no other questions, our applicant, Jan, is here, and she would like to just come up here to the microphone and speak. Go ahead.
Yeah, good, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Jan, I'm with Flourished Development Group. Yeah, thanks so much, you know, for the meeting today. You know, I, we do have, you know, Sabraak, Mr. Haggis represent us, you know, regarding this project and Emily. And from us, we really want to share some information outside this project. We've been working with different cities and with different, you know, projects, in Strefford, Charlestown, Summerside, Montague, Moncton. Right now, it's kind of like, especially Charlestown is the birthplace of the whole country, and also it's the capital city of the province. Yeah, as Deputy Mayor just mentioned, it's kind of like, we're going to welcome so many people. Yeah, and I heard, you know, Ms. Eleanor just mentioned, I think, you know, right now, the situation is more like, you know, the traffic, the road, and the green space, I think this will be the topics people is going to focus on. You know, for this project, especially for the location, I don't think, you know, it's going to bring, the idea will, will, like, you know, we're going to make it work, you know, it's very close to old amenities, yeah, for people. And then people don't really need to have their own, you know, cars, or they could use the transit. And then the other thing is kind of like, I heard Sin just mentioned, you know, affordable housing program, things like that. You know, for us, for our project, Systemal Subdivision in Strefford, it's, it's kind of our idea, it doesn't mean affordable, it's, there are two different meanings for affordable. For us, it's kind of like, we really want to, you know, by using more the new materials and then lower the, the cost for every day, you know, leaving the, for housing, right? This is kind of the idea. Yeah, and then, right now, it's kind of like, and also, I think, everybody here, especially, I, I really want to be honest, you know, compared to other cities, Charlestown is such a big, you know, you have planning... is such a big, you know, you have planning and, um, different, you know, departments. Maybe it's, you have so many projects, but it's kind of like how, how to work, you know, um, together and make it, um, like effectively and efficient, it will be the key. Yeah. I think, you know, uh, last time when we had a meeting with, um, the Minister of Housing, uh, the province one and the federal one, it's kind of like, everybody, it's, it's, especially, um, you are also the leaders, you know, to represent the communities. Um, and I think you also need to have some support, you know, for some training, um, sessions and then to keep everybody with the new, um, ideas, innovative, you know, uh, information. And that will kind of like, we, we cannot, you know, um, we cannot stop the moving, right? Yeah. So that part, I, I really want to, um, I'm not sure I, I, I focused the target, but the thing is, um, we need to have a new way to, you know, think about how to make things work. Yeah. So, um, even this one, it's kind of, it's not going to, um, make it work right away. It's totally fine for us. You know, we have other projects, you know, we could, you know, maybe the priorities, we can go, um, the, the other, you know, uh, uh, locations. But the thing is, uh, for Charlotte Town right now, kind of like, even the leaders here, you really need to have a better way to work together. Yeah. I'm sorry, maybe it's kind of, I don't really want to be rude, but it's kind of for planning, you know, you don't have enough people to handle, you know, for our eighty-eight, uh, units project and also for this one. And this one, uh, actually, that's two, uh, twelve units, uh, apartment building, it's already, we already built two, you know, in Montague. Everything went well, so we want to copy these two. And then for Finance PI, they do have pilot program. We already got financing approval. But here, it's kind of like, we submitted the application, you know, during the Christmas time and everything kind of like delay, delay, delay. So, yeah, if we cannot make it, you know, that pilot program, two percent interest rate, we could make it easily. Yeah. You know, couple of, so it's, it's, um, I, I'm not sure. I, I just a little bit worried about, you know, the, the situation here. Yeah, we really need, um, to work together, you know? I think, um, Ms. Eleanor has lots of ideas. Yeah, maybe give more training for, for, for people inside and then work together. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate your, uh, your words. Does anybody else have any, um, any questions about this application? And if we don't, what we have is, um, a recommendation from staff that, um, they are recommending that Planning Board, uh, recommend to council to approve the request to proceed to public consultation. So that's the resolution that we have on the floor. Do we have anyone that would want to move that resolution? Okay, moved by Sin. Did we have a seconded by Bobby Kenny? All those in favor of moving this forward to council for public consultation? Okay? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. So, next report is 480, 482 Queen Street. And Brandon is going to give this report on behalf of Laurel Palmer Thompson and is a request to rezone the subject lot from low-density residential to medium-density residential. And, um, I'll turn that over to you, Brandon.
Perfect. Thank you again. Um, so the next two presentations I'm doing for Laurel, um, she did the reports and the PowerPoints, I'm just presenting them. Um, so yeah, this request, uh, it's to rezone the subject property from low-density residential to medium-density for townhouse residential. Um, additionally, an amendment to the future land use map, Appendix A, from low-density residential to medium-density residential is also required. This rezoning will allow additional density on an existing lot within a mature neighborhood. So this property is a corner lot that is currently occupied by a semi-detached dwelling. Uh, the surrounding neighborhood is mostly made up of low-density dwellings with a mixture of medium-density options sprinkled throughout. The proposal is to construct an additional two units onto the existing building and convert it into a four-unit townhouse. Four parking spaces will be required for this proposal if it goes through. Um, right now, the zoning and development bylaw, uh, requires seventeen hundred and seventy-six square feet per townhouse unit within the R3T zone, which is the medium-density townhouse zone. Um, the current lot has approximately nine thousand, a little bit over nine thousand square feet, so they're good in that regard. Um, each unit will require its own separate services for water, sewer and electrical, and additionally, a party wall agreement will be required. And once all that is done, each lot will have to be subdivided. So on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, a public meeting was held where planning staff presented the request. Uh, the applicant, Paul Brown, spoke about the details of the proposed development and overall, the comments from residents were supportive. Uh, we only received one letter of, so, we only received one letter and it was in support of the proposed rezoning request. Um, looking at the official plan, it meets several goals within. So it promotes compact urban form and infill development, allows moderately higher densities within neighborhoods, particularly those with suburban centers. Uh, establishes an appropriate relationship with the height and density of all new development within mixed-use residential areas and neighborhoods. Um, I should also mention, the addition onto the semi-detached dwelling will be the same height as the current building, so we're not increasing height at all. It's just going to be a four-unit townhouse. And another point within the official plan is it encourages development within fully-service areas of the city and near centers of employment. So with those previous points in mind and the fact that the property is currently occupied by a two-unit dwelling that only takes up one-half of the property, leaving lots to be desired on the lot, the Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council, recommend to council to amend Appendix A and the future land use map of this city of Charlotte Town from low-density residential to medium-density residential and request to amend Appendix G, zoning map of Charlotte Town zoning and development bylaw. I think, I don't know. From R2, low-density residential to R3T, medium-density residential for the property located at 480, 482 Queen Street. And I can answer any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you for your report. Does anybody have any questions? No questions. So the Planning and Heritage Department is recommending to Planning Board to recommend to council to approve the rezoning request for 480, 482 Queen Street. Do I have somebody that would like to move that? Okay, moved by Paul Conley and seconded, seconded by Jackie Skamen? Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Okay, that's a unanimous support to move that on to council for support of the zoning request. So thank you for that. And thank you for the pinching for Laurel today. So we are now moving on to our next report, which is the, um, 257 to 269 Mount Edward Road CDA Concept Plan and, uh, report. And this is the report followed by the public consultation that was already had. So, over to you again.
All right. So this is in the same area of the project that Emily spoke upon earlier, uh, shares a lot of similarities. So at 257 or 269 Mount Edward Road, uh, we have several requests. Um, so these start with to approve the development concept plan that was proposed, to amend Appendix A of the bylaw from low-density residential to comprehensive planning area, to amend Appendix B of the bylaw to allow for mixed-use residential development consisting of apartments and townhouses, to amend Appendix G of the bylaw from R2S to CDA zone for a portion of five lots, and to consolidate 257, 261, 265, and 269 Mount Edward Road along with parcel number three nine zero zero six nine zero. So the size of the property, um, considering all those areas, is about ten point nine seven acres. Uh, to the north and south is bound by CDA zone land. On the east lies Mount Edward Road. And on the west, the Confederation Trail runs along the property line. The request here is to approve the development concept plan to develop land for multi-unit residential development under Section forty-four of the zoning and development bylaw. The proposal here is for four multi-unit apartment buildings with underground and surface parking. Uh, these apartment buildings are proposed to be six stories in height. And additionally, the concept plan proposes four-stacked townhouses consisting of twenty-six units along Mount Edward Road. In total, five hundred and forty-two dwelling units are being proposed within this project. A percentage of the ground floor within the proposed apartment building shall be allocated for commercial uses to serve the residents of this development and nearby, uh, people. One central access for Mount Edward Road is proposed to serve the townhouses with parking at the rear of the buildings. The central access will also serve the apartment buildings. However, access to this apartment dwellings will be temporarily for Mount Edward Road as a new public road will be constructed to allow for adequate frontage of the apartment buildings and access. The, the applicant is proposing to subdivide the land into four large lots after everything is built for the, for the apartment buildings. Subdivision is permitted once the new public road is constructed. The four lots for the townhouse will have public frontage along Mount Edward Road. So in response to the city's notification, uh, letters, eight responses were received from nearby property owners and all eight letters were in support of the proposed development concept plan request, rezoning, and law consolidation. At the public meeting on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, developers consultant present, presented design details of the proposal. Following the presentation, residents pressed for comments. The majority of comments centered around the parking requirements. Um, there is a lot of parking and if these spaces were needed or they could be reduced. Uh, other comments included maximizing green space as well as the road connections to the development. Um, so this proposal is located within walking distance to bus routes, the Confederation Trail, shopping, and other amenities. Uh, in the planning practice, when assessing locations that are appropriate for residential use, it is appropriate to locate residential dwellings with loc, in locations that are close to amenities, transit, parkland, schools, and just general walkable neighborhoods. Uh, this area of Mount Edward Road is in close proximity to all those uses. Uh, the project conforms to the official plan goals, uh, to name a few, uh, applying the policies of new housing within the fully-service areas of the city and surrounding neighborhoods, encouraging the provision of adequate housing for residents of special needs, promoting compact urban form and infill development, as well as the efficient use of infrastructure and public service facilities, and base residential densities on the availability of municipal services, education facilities, recreation, open space amenities, transportation, and other factors that the city may need to consider in these areas. So in conclusion, um, Charlotte Town's low vacancy rates presented a lot of challenges for people trying to access housing within the city in fully-serviced and desirable locations. Um, density and housing variety is a sustainable way to plan forward as allows for better use of services that are already available. Uh, this will decrease the amount of urban sprawl, which has, uh, become an issue within the city. And in terms of land use, this area of city was, this area of the city was identified as a hot, as an area of higher density that is needed. Staff are therefore recommending that the application for the proposed development concept plan, rezoning, future land use map amendment, and law consolidation are approved. And thank you.
Thank you for that. I know, folks, we've seen this before prior to the public consultation. So does anyone else have any other questions on this? And no doubt, we'll see this again because once, once they begin, then we probably see it again when they come in with plans to ensure that the, the, um, the comprehensive development plan is followed. Is that?
I don't have much experience with like comprehensive development plans, but I'm pretty sure that's the case. And if they need variances or what have you, well, we will likely see it again.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead, Rosemary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification, is this the same land that we received an application on last summer? Because my notes sound very similar to 57 to 269 Mount Edward Road. Is this like a, another, this is for more units this time, five hundred and forty-two? And I think last, the application we reviewed last year was for three hundred and forty-four. I'm just curious whether it's another application for the same property.
I'm not sure. I've only been here for eight months and the notes Laurel gave me, I didn't see, but and so, yeah.
The, um, the applicant is here, though.
Yeah, so I can clarify.
Come, come up to a mic, just so the folks at home that are listening can hear too.
Hello. I'm Chris Baglow, part of, or partner on Rich Development, which is proposing this development. So I can clarify, we did put this initially towards you guys last summer and, uh, I guess we waited a little bit to see what the master plan was going to come out with and then changed from four-story to six-story, which reflects the increase in unit density. The, I believe you were saying five hundred in some units. It, it's actually four sixty-one. The count is off, I think, by the city a little bit, but was correct in the plan that went forward to a public meeting. If that answers your question.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions? No, no, we've already been to public meeting for this. He's be, yeah.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah.
He said, but the staff recommends to recommend council to approve the project to see if public consultation sets in place.
No, it's, um, the Planning and Heritage Department, um, um, are, are recommending the Planning Board to recommend to council to amend Appendix A, Appendix B. Yeah. Yeah, you must have an old one. Yeah. So, as I said, the recommendation from this planning staff to, are recommending to the Planning Board to recommend to council to approve the development concept plan pertaining to the one, two, three, four, five PID numbers that are part of this application. So that would be the resolution that council would approve or not. Do we have, um, anyone that would like to move this along to council for approval? Okay, moved by Sin. Um, do I have a seconder? Moved by Bobby Kenny. All those in favor? Okay, I unanimously support it. Thank you. Okay. So we're on to our, um, we are on to our report number five. And we have, um, Robert Silky here, Planner Three, I might add. Congratulations on your, your, um, new, uh, yeah, new challenge. And this is a, um, Lot thirty-nine Oak Drive, and it is a request to rezone. And I'll just turn that over to you, Robert. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so the application before you tonight is, um, a rezoning application. It's to rezone the property from R1L, which is a single-detached residential zone, uh, to low-density residential zone, R2. And the request is just to proceed to public consultation to, uh, receive feedback from the public on this application itself. So as you can see here, um, Oak Drive, Lot thirty-nine, it's a corner lot. Um, currently, it's vacant. Uh, the frontage is, well, it's both on Oak Drive, but it's essentially, um, the northern boundary, which is around twenty meters. Uh, and the depth is about twenty-two meters. Uh, in the surrounding area, we have a mixture of, uh, R2 to the northeast and the south, and then R1L to the northwest and immediately to the west of the subject property. And then along with those zones, we have a mixture of single-detached dwellings, uh, with some two-unit dwellings, uh, throughout that. So, uh, the purpose of the rezoning application is to allow for the construction of a two-unit dwelling. Um, this is the proposed site plan. Uh, I'll note that there is a sanitary easement that's going across, uh, cutting across the property. Um, so that's again registered on title and that's again for infrastructure services. Um, however, uh, the applicant was able to position the proposed two-unit dwelling outside of that easement, which they are required to do so in case there needs to be any access to that sanitary sewer for any, uh, upgrades or, uh, any fixtures or anything like that. So as you can see, there would be two proposed access points, um, basically to the north and then to the east on, uh, Oak Drive. These are the concepts. These are the concept elevation drawings. So, as you can see, it's a two-story, two-unit with diametrically opposing views of the frontages. So, each fronting on to Oak Drive just on different sides of the property. And that's the rear of elevation, and then your right elevation, and then, of course, the left with the access. All right. So, just to give some additional information, if this were to proceed to an R2 zone, there is some defects that the applicant would have to address. That would be after, of course, if they obtained the rezoning. But essentially, going to an R2 zone puts the property into an interesting situation. No mattering how, depending on what method they want to go, if it's a semi-detached or a duplex, there will be variances required in the case of semi-detached for lot area and lot frontage. And then in the case of a duplex, that would be lot frontage itself. Now, what they've proposed structurally would appear from the plans to be a semi-detached. It's how we would define in the zoning bylaw. So, chances are, they would have to go through a frontage and lot area variance to accommodate that. And these are kind of the regulations of the current zone, which the property is, and that's again R1L. And as you can see, quite onerous requirements. If you look at the corner lot requirements in relation to the R2 requirements. So, I guess I would just pay some attention to that for the board, knowing full well that we're going to be going through an official plan amendment exercise, and this will require also zoning bylaw amendments. So, when we're trying to look for a gentle density or infill, these are things that we would have to pay attention to if we want to really increase, you know, infill and density within existing neighborhoods. Lot area and frontage are usually the two biggest issues that will confine or restrict the development in number of units there, too. So, for now, we would just proceed to public consultation if it were to be recommended to be approved. And again, council endorsed that recommendation. I just outlined the process there with the circulation requirements, notification to surrounding property owners, and then, of course, having a public consultation to receive any feedback from the surrounding residents and the general public. And with that, we do recommend approval to proceed to public consultation for this application, and I can take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert, for your report. Okay, we'll start with Council McCabe has a question.
Thank you.
Do you want to try me first, or do you want to go directly to Robert?
You know, it's more around, and I know probably because we talk every day, but this is a poor corner where this house is, I think, it's as you start to round the turn, right, as you're coming up over Oak Drive. So, I'm just wondering, with this, you know, is there any consultation that happens with Public Works and Roads, like just on traffic and stuff around this area? There's a lot of concern around the new Oak Drive becoming more of a throughway and the road not being designed properly at this point, kind of handle that. So, between a sewer in your backyard and a bad turn, I'm just wondering if it makes sense at this point personally. Like, has there been any talk with that?
No discussion in regards specifically this application. However, I will note that according to the zoning bylaw regulations, their placement for accesses are strategically positioned the furthest that they can be from the intersection. So, obviously, that's a good thing if you're going around the corner, not having an access spread out on the street that could potentially result into a collision. So, you know, again, I think the applicant knew that when they were looking at designing the site. So, they've strategically positioned the accesses as far away as they possibly can from that corner, which would comply with the Public Works requirements and our distance from intersection bylaw requirements as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council McCabe. Thank you, Robert. Any other questions? Okay. If we don't have any other questions, then, so the Planning and Heritage Department is recommending that planning board recommend to city, to council, to approve the request to proceed to public consultation. So, do I have somebody that would like to move that resolution? Okay, moved by Paul Conley and seconded by Rosemary Huber. All those in favor? Okay, unanimously supported to move that along to council for council's final decision on public consultation. Thank you very much, Robert. Okay, our next report, it is for, it is for a reconsideration report, and that is Robert again. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the next application, and I believe it's the last one on the agenda, is the reconsideration of a demolition permit that staff issued under the zoning and development bylaw for 231 Richmond Street. So, this is a request to reconsider that decision. There is currently an appeal logged into Iraq, and of course, according to the process, Iraq is holding the hearing in abeyance until council makes a decision on whether they want to reconsider this issuance of a demo permit or not. So, getting to it, for those that might not know, there is a threshold test for a reconsideration process. And so, just kind of going through quickly, if there was any new material facts or evidence not available at the time the initial order or decision came to light, so that would be the issuance of the demolition permit. If there was a material change of circumstances that occurred since the initial order or decision, or finally, if there's a clear doubt as to the correctness of the order of the decision in the first instance. So, that would basically mean if the process as per like the zoning and development bylaw wasn't followed correctly, or if there was a procedural error that was not followed correctly through like an OP requirement. So, after saying that, we, after receiving recommendation from the board, council determines, yes, that the request would either pass the threshold test or not. The requests would be held in pursuit to 315 of the bylaw. And like I said, Iraq's appeal is held in abeyance until this decision is made. So, the appellant has put forward that the test that wasn't quite met is there was a clear doubt as to the correctness of the order or decision in the first instance. So, again, kind of a procedural issue. So, in the submission for reconsideration, the arguments were made by the appellant. They state that council failed to act in accordance with good planning principles, and council erred in its interpretation of the official plan and applicable bylaws. So, for the first test, so council's decision has no merit based on sound planning principles as the demolition permit was approved for a designated heritage property or located in a heritage preservation area. So, this is what the appellant is maintaining. So, staff's response to this would be that the subject property is not a designated heritage resource, and it is neither located in a heritage preservation area. The subject property was also sent to the heritage board to determine if it should be protected as a heritage site. As per the board's recommendation to council dated June 14th of this year, the board recommended that the subject property not be temporarily designated as a heritage resource. Appellant's second argument, council's decision does not comply with the principles and objectives of the city's official plan. So, staff's response to this would be Section 421 of the official plan outlines the objective of promoting, protecting designated heritage resources. That's outlined in the 500-lot vision. However, the vision does not exclude demolition or discourage for new development. If new development comes along, it's said to have a positive influences that make significant contributions to the evolution of the area, continue to create a distinct sense of place, and contribute to its success. So, any new development in the 500-lot area would be subject to design review. So, for example, in this instance, where the request was to demo a single-detached dwelling, and then the province is basically applying to create a three-unit new dwelling in its place, that said development would have to undergo through the design review process, which would require a design reviewer, qualified designer reviewer to review that, and then to make a recommendation to the plant, to the design review board, who would then make pass, would either accept the recommendation or not accept the recommendation, pass that decision on to council. So, in this instance, there is a check and balance in play to ensure that any new developments would maintain design aesthetics that would be conducive to the 500-lot area and ensure that distinct sense of place. And then finally, the appellant argues that council's decision does not comply with regulations of the zoning and development bylaw. So, this is where we're getting into procedural issues. So, specifically, Section 332 and 352. So, 332 states that no development shall be undertaken without development permit. The applicant applied for demolition permit, which is approved by staff March this year. As per the zoning and development bylaw, Section 351, a demo permit is required to demolish a structure on the property and within the city. The applicant did not err in applying under the correct process, and staff did not err issuing the correct permit. So, I guess I will just clarify the distinction for this, that if you were to demolish a building, you have to apply for demolition permit. When you want to reconstruct and build a new building, you have to apply for a building and development permit. So, in this instance, the applicant was required to obtain a demolition permit, and then they would also be required to apply for a building and development permit at that which time they decide to apply. Now, you do not have to apply for both a demolition and then concurrently a building and development permit. And of course, logically, you know, in some instances, some people do not know what they want to redevelop the site for. But in the case of like, say, an unsafe property or the building is not structurally sound, it would have to be demolished, and the foundation would have to be leveled to grade. And then, of course, there would be no immediate requirement to have that site redeveloped. So, that's why there are two processes in place, and the applicant and staff did not err in issuing the demolition permit. So, Section 352 also states a demolition permit may be issued to a building or structure they're part of as long as it's not identified as a designated heritage resource or located with a heritage preservation area as per the City of Charlatown Heritage Preservation bylaw. So, considering that neither the property is a designated heritage resource, nor is it located in a heritage preservation area, and when the subject property was sent to heritage board for a decision, they elected to recommend to council to not temporarily designate it, there was no error violation then of this regulation in the zoning and development bylaw. And thus, again, no error with issuing a demolition permit to a non-heritage property. So, it would be staff's opinion that there is no clear doubt as to the reasonable correctness of decisions that were made. The demolition permit was issued correctly. The process was followed, and therefore, we would argue that there was no procedural defects or regularities in the issuance of that, and that that be, again, submit to council that they not reconsider the initial decision of issuing a demolition permit for the subject property. I will also note that the city solicitor reviewed staff's recommendation and report. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions? Go ahead, Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wondering if this matter is still sub judice before Iraq, or has Iraq already decided on it?
So, as I just, as I stated earlier, Iraq, whenever there is an appeal that's made to Iraq, and in this case, it would be the demolition, the issuance of a permit, before Iraq engages into a lengthy process on, again, deciding on this threshold test and whether, you know, reasonable, you know, procedure was followed, it's given the ability to counsel to make a decision whether they want to reconsider that initial decision. So, that is basically the rationale for the threshold test, that if any of those, you know, threshold tests were met, and there was like an error that was made, then it gives council the ability to retract the initial, original decision, and then issue a new decision in its place. And so, Iraq is again holding this into abeyance until, which is basically placing the hearing on hold until council makes a decision whether they want to reconsider the issuance of the demo permit or not.
So, the appellant's response were basically subjected to the city rather than Iraq, right?
So, the applicant's response was basically by appealing the initial decision to Iraq. So, they did actually have to fill out the appeal notice, or the appeal form to Iraq, and then again lodge that with Iraq. We, as a city, get a copy of that, of that appeal, and we get to see what the applicant is maintaining as to like what threshold test was not met, or if there was any procedural errors that were made. And so, on the basis of what they've presented, staff then takes that back and reviews it against how the permit was issued, any official plan policies, zoning and development bylaw requirements, any new information that would come to light, or wasn't at light at the time of the original decision. And then that kind of falls back then on staff to prepare a report, of course, with the solicitor's review, going back to whether, you know, a mistake was made or not. And again, that's just going through and allowing that council to either decide if they wanted to retract the original decision or not, and that's through the reconsideration process.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions?
More comment. You did a great job of clarifying. Again, I don't think any of the three threshold tests, I don't see where we erred on any of that. So, I'm going to move a motion to accept staff recommendation to not accept the reconsideration application.
Thank you, Council McCabe. And so, what the recommendation says is the Planning and Heritage Department recommend the planning board to recommend to council to not reconsider the decision pertaining to the demolition permit for 231 Richmond Street. So, we have, Council McCabe has moved that. Do we have a second here? Moved by Bobby Kenny. So, any questions on the resolution? Or, okay, all those in favor? Okay, unanimously supported to move that along to council. Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Robert, for your two presentations. Okay. So, does anybody have any new business? I believe that's the next item on the, yeah, any introduction of new business? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Council McCabe, seconded by Paul Conley. All those in favor? Unanimously supported. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned. Have a wonderful evening.